Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the 2022 Candidate Forum for ISD 181, Board of Education. Thank you. Thank you for those that are attending here in person tonight and all those watching on Facebook. My name, I'm Matt Seymour. Up until recently, I owned the Q Squares gas stations. I'm past Board Chair and current Board Member of the Brainerd Lakes Chamber of Commerce. So, and I have the honor of serving tonight as your forum moderator. So to start our proceedings, I would please ask everybody to stand and we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance, and the flag is to my left here. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation and God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So tonight's forums are brought to you by the League of Women Voters, the Brainerd Dispatch, and the Brainerd Lakes Chamber, with support from the Brainerd Lakes Area Community Foundation and Bladech. We would also like to thank Forest View and the staff here for hosting us at this event. So tonight's forum will be split into two sections. We will begin with the forum looking at the special election candidates who are running for a two-year term, and there are two positions available for that. And then after about an hour, we'll take a brief break and we'll transition to the regular election candidates. They are running for a four-year term, and there are three positions open. As we go through tonight, I would ask that you appear as quiet as possible while the candidates are speaking so that everybody can hear. Also, please leave any applause or clapping until the end of this section, so that's about an hour. We'd also ask you to turn your cell phones off or put them on silent, and please remember that no photography or recording is allowed during the forum. However, tonight's event is being livestreamed on the Brainerd Lakes Chamber Facebook page, and it will also be available afterwards on the website, brainerdlakeschamber.com. The viewed expressed in this forum are those of the candidates and not those of any of the forum organizers or sponsors. None of the organizers endorse candidates or political parties, and if you want more information on the races, please consult your program card or the guide. As anybody here today or on Facebook, you are welcome to submit questions that we will try to ask to the candidates. You can either do that with the question cards that should be on your tables, or you can submit them via Facebook. If you need a card or you want to submit a question, please raise your hand and somebody will be there to help you. Please be reminded that the questions will be kept anonymous and must be addressed to all candidates. Those who are unclear, hostile, or of a personal nature cannot be used, and we do reserve the right to screen questions and may rephrase them and/or consolidate them. If you do not get a chance to ask your question or your answer is unclear, we would encourage you to contact the candidates directly after the forum. Due to a large number of the candidates this year, we will be pressed for time tonight, and the Planning Committee has seven prepared questions, which we think that are forward-looking and cover many of the key issues important to parents and community members. But with the time constraints, please know that we may have time for limited audience questions, and those will be selected based on popularity and also excluding those topics that have already been covered. We'll also ask the same questions to the second round of candidates, so we will not be taking additional questions in the second half of tonight. So moving on to the structure this evening, each candidate will have a one-and-a-half-minute opening statement, and we will then move on to the prepared questions with up to one minute per candidate for response. We will have closing statements at the end, and those will be allocated 30 seconds. Both groups will be asked the same questions, and we will rotate the order that the questions are asked for the first candidate as we move through them. Again, I've mentioned the time constraints. We have a number of candidates, so I have been asked to strictly enforce the time limits for everybody answering their questions. Candidates will see display cards at the front here indicating how much time they have remaining, and very appropriately for being here at Forest View, they will hear a bell when their time is up. There you go. I'm not done yet. So, we're just about to begin, but before we do that, let's give the candidates, community sponsors, and the event venue, and volunteers a round of applause. So we'll now start with our opening statements. I'm going to ask each candidate to respond. I also have a written submission from Michelle Brecken, who could not be here tonight, and I'll do that at the end of the opening statements. So I will ask Anthony to start off, where you have a minute and a half for your opening statement.
Hi, thanks for coming. My name is Anthony Bonzante. I'm a surgeon from Crosby-Irington, Minnesota. I've lived in Brainerd for about the last six years. I served on two school boards in the past. I served on Crosby-Irington School Board in 2010, and I served on the Shockley School Board, which is about the equivalent size of Brainerd, in 2014. I enjoy being on the board, but my passion is the kids and how we can develop these kids into exceptional adults after school. Okay? And I want to bring an environment, safety, security, and fun back to Brainerd so we can gain more students back that we lost last year. I think we lost about 400 kids, but I think Brainerd School District has the potential to be what it was 20 years ago. We just need to work collaboratively with the teachers, the staff, the parents, the community, to bring these kids back and bring pride back to Brainerd, what it was before. Thank you for coming, I appreciate your help.
All right. Tris?
Hi, I'm Tris Cleaver, and I've lived in Brainerd for about 46 years. I have three grandchildren and nine grandchildren, who either have or still do go to the school district. I have two AA degrees in AAS Law Enforcement and a post-secondary education in K through sixth grade. I've owned and operated my own daycare for 40 years. I drove a school bus for nine. It was during the pandemic helping 15 children with distance learning that I knew I could be a good resource for the school district and decided to make the commitment and run for the school board. As a school board member, I will insist on financial fiscal responsibility from our school administrators. Further and more importantly, I will work to make our school district an inclusive, financially responsible, and student-centered district. Our children need a solid foundation, education, to take on the world after they graduate. I hope to be able to be a part of that through being an ISD school board member. At every grade level, school should be rewarding, fun, and challenging, and an experience. Through open and honest conversations with parents, teachers, and our community and the school board, we will be able to retain and bring students back into the district. They can and have faith and trust in us, and thank you for your time.
Great. Jessica?
Okay. Hi, everybody. I'm Jessica Lynn Forisberg, and I include my middle name because if you look up Jessica Forisberg, you'll get a bunch of blond Swedish women who are actresses, and they are not rated G. I am not blonde, nor am I in any non-G rated movies. So, I'm running because I absolutely love kids. I'm the longest-running vocational Bible school teacher at my church back in the cities. I was born and raised on the cities and coming up to the cabin up on Lake Edward for, you know, every weekend in a week on 4th of July. My grandpa was born and raised here, went to all the schools and Brainerd College. He's an engineer, so am I, and my great-grandfather worked for the railroad, so he got some land and plopped a railcar on the land, and that was the cabin. I used to climb up it when I was little. I've been on many boards and always a treasurer. I'm good with money, and I was the Minnesota Government Engineering Council, which is a bargaining unit for all of the state engineers all over the state. And I was on that board my whole post-grad career and treasurer for four years. Thanks.
All right. Trevor?
Good evening. Trevor Mahalund. I'm a lifelong Lakes Area resident, '99 graduate of Brainerd. I take great pride in the fact that I was born and raised in the Lakes Area. I'm proud to say I am a warrior. As a parent and lifelong Lakes Area resident, I have a vested interest in our community and the success of our students. I am eager and willing to participate in meetings and special task force to work on the best outcomes for our children, parents, and staff, and will bring a unique and fresh perspective to the board. Some of my strengths are my willingness to learn and understand so I can make the best educated decisions for all students. I am also willing to take on any task and hold myself accountable to see them through to the end. If you have any questions or would like to discuss issues in more detail with me, please reach out to me on Facebook at Trevor Mahalund for School Board, and I'd be happy to set up some time to talk with you one-on-one. Thank you.
Mike?
Good evening. Mike Stanek, 20-year resident of the Brainerd Lakes Area, 40-years-old, married to Elsie, formerly of Ray Burger. She's the PTO President at Garfield. I know I mentioned that last Monday, but another shout-out. Three kids in the district, fourth, third, and first grade, all attending Garfield. I have a degree in elementary education with a math emphasis. I'm currently in the military, been in for 20 years. I have four years left until I can retire with my active-duty retirement. I do have my substitute teaching certificate and have coaching experience with the youth in the Brainerd Lakes Area. I was a finalist for the vacated position last November. I was one of eight community members that continually showed up for the superintendent forum for the hiring of our new superintendent. If lucky enough, you're going to be, if lucky enough to serve on this board, you're getting a policy-driven, moderate approach, who wants to advocate for all voices to be heard. My main reason, with five open seats, I think it's very important for the young generation of parent to step up and be the new representation of the Brainerd School District. Thank you, and look forward to the rest of the evening.
David?
Hi, good evening. My name is David Stimmick. I'm married to Christy. We have a 13-year-old daughter, Annabelle, and a 10-year-old son, Jonathan. We both grew up in the Brainerd Lakes Area. I graduated from Crosby-Irington High School, and Christy graduated from Brainerd. I have a Bachelor of Science degree in Business Management from the United States Air Force Academy, and I have a Master's degree from Troy State University in Human Resource Management. I'm a retired Air Force Colonel, having served 29 years on active duty. Throughout my time in the military, I've lived in seven different states and two countries, and I've always considered Minnesota home. I retired from the Air Force in 2017, and we moved back here to Brainerd to be closer to family. In 2018, I applied for a substitute teaching license, and I've been substitute teaching and volunteering in both District 181 and 182 ever since. I'm also a substitute, or I'm sorry, I am an assisted baseball coach at Crosby-Irington High School, and I've coached youth hockey here in Brainerd for the last five years. I want to thank the League of Women Voters, the Brainerd Lakes Chamber of Commerce, the Brainerd Dispatch, and Forest View Middle School for putting this candidate forum on. I appreciate the invitation to be here, and I'm excited for this opportunity to run for the board. Thank you.
John?
Good evening. First, I would ask everybody, make sure you continue to pray for Connor, the real warrior. Your prayers are working, he's getting better. My wife Sally and I have been married 48 years, and 35, which has been here in Brainerd. We have four children and 11 grandchildren. All of our kids went to Brainerd Public Schools and have had successful life because of that. The kids, the students, have always been, always will be, are my top priority, along with staff, families, community, parents, and everybody involved in public education. I spent 35 years in public education as a teacher, coach, and advisor. I was fortunate enough to develop and implement and direct a number of unique programs, public innovative, highly successful programs, in a number of districts. Also, I believe I've been given God-telling skills that have led to my passion, my enthusiasm, my excitement for public education and for children in general, and making sure they have the best quality education that we can provide for them. I've held a number of elected positions, and I've actually been blessed to be in the Minnesota House of Representatives, where I was on the Education Finance Committee, Education Policy Committee, and Early Education, Family Education, Early Childhood Committee. Also, my wife and I, Sally, had a small insurance business agency for 22 years. Thank you, I'm excited to be here and appreciate the opportunity.
Brent?
Good evening, everybody. I just want to first of all thank everybody that's here. Obviously, you show a great interest in what this is all about. My name is Brent Yonak. I'm married to Heather. We have two girls, Ella, which is a BHS sophomore, and Livy, which is a Forest View Middle School eighth grader. I'm a BHS grad. 20 years ago, somebody said, is when Brainerd was great. That's actually when I graduated, so maybe I was the last great ones. After high school, I became an electrician. I work at the Brainerd Public Utility as an electrician to this day. I teach a night school program for local 242 as an electrical apprenticeship program to continue their education to become electricians. Why I chose to represent, I became very interested in education, especially because I have kids in the school district. COVID is definitely what got me extra interested in my kids' education, just for the fact that when they went to that distance learning thing, it was not good for our kids. I think every one of us probably agree that staying at home, trying to do school, doesn't work. The teachers themselves are our parents in school when we're not with our kids, so to support those teachers is very, very important, and to put the kids on the number-one priority of why we are running is why I want to be here. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, all the candidates here, and as I mentioned, Michelle Brecken could not attend tonight. She submitted a written opening statement, and she writes as follows. Regrettably, I am unable to be with you all tonight as I am traveling with my husband Bob on a trip to Canada that had previously planned. I'm appreciative, however, for the opportunity to submit an opening statement. I have thoughtfully considered running for the school board because I want to use all my professional experience as an educator to ensure all learners continue to have access to compassionate, inclusive, evidence-based, high-quality education. I have lived in Brainerd since 1984. Bob and I have raised five children who attended Brainerd schools and were active in a variety of extracurricular activities. I worked for 32 years in two area school districts as a school social worker. I feel I bring unique perspective to the table, having worked closely with school administrators and district leadership, side by side with teachers and support staff, all while helping families navigate the educational experience for their children. I also hope to foster a trusting relationship between the schools and the community, because I believe our cities and schools are stronger and safer when the citizens work together to support our youngest learners. So with that, this concludes the opening statements. We will now move on to the candidate questions. So each candidate will have one minute to respond, and each candidate will go in the same rotation to answer this question. So I'm going to start by presenting, asking this question to Tris, and the question is, why are you running for the school board, and what will be your top priority if you're
Like I said earlier, I was distance teaching 15 kids with 15 different Chromebooks. I had all but three grades. I had three first graders, and all the way up to they were graduating high school, and trying to manipulate all of them at one time was not a very good, very good thing. We made it. Two of them graduated high school. And when I was doing that, and some of the things that I was seeing in the curriculum, and dealing with 36 teachers and six admins, I realized just how trying some of this really is. And we need some more organization and parent involvement, and teachers have a really big What would I do? I think a lot of reorganization.
Okay, great. If any of the candidates need me to repeat the question, please let me know. Shall I read it again? So the question is, why are you running for the school board, and what will be your top priority if you're elected? So Jessica?
Well, as I mentioned, why I'm running is because I love kids. I've been teaching kids, I guess, since second grade, and I still remember that kid that I was helping, just with classes and stuff, and I was, you know, I did peer tutoring all the way up, and then in college, I was on the M-Perg Board, which is the Minnesota Public Interest Research Group, and I was the treasurer. And we had to go through reorganization, we had to go through our staff unionizing, we had to hire a new executive director, so I was involved in all that. I built in a 3% reserve, and I left the place much better than how it had been the whole way. My top priority would be talking to teachers and learning how to support them best, because they take care of our kids.
Great. Trevor?
Yeah. So the biggest part, me wanting to run for and when a board seat is focused around making the school district the best educational experience for our children as possible. With that, I mean, our kids, these are better, and we need to put focus back on preparing them for life scenarios with basic life skills and education. With that being said, we may offer certain classes as an elective, but I really think we need to look at what we are using for graduation standards, as each individual district in the state does have that ability to do so. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Mike?
One of the main reasons that I'm running for school board is to continue to selflessly serve my community, the National Guard. We're community members the way it is. I just want to continue that service, especially for the children. My kids now, I'm more invested than ever. And like I said in my opening statement, I think it's imperative that young parents and families get involved and be that new representation. Take that baton and be that new sense of leadership in the community. I want to be a collaborative, non-partisan person that brings people to the table to have conversation. My top priority, honestly, would be to reinvest in the community and those business relationships that kind of went to the wayside the last couple of years. I think it's important that we speak to the community, parents, get intel, so we can have those partnerships moving forward. Thank you.
David?
Hi. Well, the main reason that I'm running for the school board, it's pretty straightforward. Both of our children, Tan Forest View Middle School, so I'm invested in the schools, I'm invested in this community. My top priorities, I want to help provide the best educational opportunities for all students. I want to make sure we hire the best teachers and staff to support them. I want to make sure our curriculum is relevant and challenging, and I want to build strong relationships with the students, staff, parents, and the community. Thank you.
John?
The reason I'm running for the school board is to work to continue to bring this great district forward and provide our children with the best possible public school experience that we can physically give to them. My main priorities are students, my main priorities will be our students' needs and academics, their public safety, co- and curricular experiences will all be my top priorities. However, we also need to address recruiting and retaining the best licensed possible staff, and that includes support staff, available. We need to address class sizes, we need to address fair and equal funding for our schools, including the Special Ed Cross subsidy, which is killing a lot of school districts in the state and the nation. We also need to develop community and business partnerships with our schools. We must have rigorous academics, along with those kinds of curricula that provide lifelong skills, like personal skills, social skills, job skills, and life skills. Thank you very much.
Brent?
Thank you. My main goal would be to represent you, the community, the businesses, the parents, and most of all, the kids. I want to try to find avenues to get more feedback from parents so we get a better sense of what the community wants, and then represent that as a school board member. To keep Brainerd moving forward, I know a lot of people want to look back and say, we got to get it to what it was, but you can't go back, you need to move forward. So with more community involvement and people just like yourselves getting in and giving feedback to us, so that we can get what the community wants for our kids. Thank you.
Okay. And then Anthony?
I'm running for school board because I want to bring blue-collar common sense back to the board. I want to speak for our taxpayers, I want to speak for our students, and I want to make Brainerd what it used to be, and that's academic excellence, athletic excellence, and arts-in-excellence. I think the whole thing encompasses a great school, and we have the ability to do it through our community, through our teachers, through our staff, and our superintendent. The one thing that my first priority will always be, safety and security of our students. It has to be, whether it's on the football field, whether it's at a choir concert, whether it's in the classroom. We have to have safety and security at our forefront for our students.
Done. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to the second question. So this will be Jessica. You'll be starting with this one. What are your ideas for stabilizing and increasing enrollment at Brainerd Public Schools? So what are your ideas for stabilizing and increasing enrollment at Brainerd Public Schools?
Well, I guess I didn't realize that was an issue. Are people going to private schools, or are they switching to homeschooling because there's a problem with the teachers, or is it because there aren't all of the enrichment programs? I mean, those are definitely a necessity. I was, I couldn't believe it, when my siblings, who, my oldest one is 14 years younger than me, I mean, like, there was just nothing at my high school. It was crazy, you know? I mean, I was in band and choir and marching band, and went to Duluth parades, and All Colors United, Students for Environmental Awareness, I mean, every club and committee you could be on, they didn't even have cheerleaders, you know? And a lot of sports, I mean, it was just a tragedy. Maybe that's the problem. Maybe we need that stuff.
Okay. All right. Trevor?
So literally, you have to revert back to the last couple of years. You might guess it was...
Try again.
Sorry, guys, that's not me. I'll talk it off.
Well, you want to wait till you get a mic, or do you want to keep going? I don't want to miss your time up. So can we start the minute again, please? Thank you.
It really comes to bringing the community back into it. Over the last couple of years, the community has felt abandoned. There's no trust, or anything right now, and we really need to work with all of them to ensure that their voices are being heard and that they are welcome. With the community, we need to make sure that any input they have, they feel is actually a valuable input into making the district a success for years to come, is really what it comes down to. We need to listen to them. It takes a village to raise our children, right? So with that village, we have to make sure that they feel included into our decision-making. It's not just the school board, it's the school board, and it's actually the district administration as well. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. All right, Mike?
Well, first we need to understand what the numbers are. So luckily enough, I did some research today and I saw, according to the agenda from the school board meetings, that we are down one hundred and ninety-two students from September fourteenth, two thousand twenty, to September twelfth, two thousand twenty-two. From last May till September twelfth, we're only down one hundred and forty-two. If you look at the twenty-two-year trend, it has always went down. It's not just the last four years. It's a much bigger issue than just the last few years. How am I gonna, how, what are my ideas to stabilize that? Well, we need to work together with the community. We need to market our district along with the community businesses to draw people to the Brainerd Lakes area, which will then bring enrollment up. We do need to dig in, though. We need to dig in and find out why are those class sizes being reduced over time. Thank you.
David?
Well, hi. That's a good question. I guess I, since I started to put my name in the hat to run for the school board, I, I dug into some of the policies, the procedures that are, that are on the board. I've learned a lot. I've learned a lot. I learned that I have a lot to learn about the six thousand students, the thirteen hundred employees, our budget process, our existing contracts, our current policies, our curriculum, et cetera, et cetera. The list goes on. What I have learned is that I have a better appreciation of what the board does and what the impacts they have on our community. I know it's not going to be an easy job and I know I don't have all the answers, but I promise you I will be dedicated to working hard and doing my best to learn all the sides of the issues in order to make the best decisions for our district. Thank you.
All right, John?
State of Minnesota serves about mid-ninety percent of the children in the state of Minnesota in our public education system. It's not just a Brainerd problem. It's a Minnesota problem, is a nationwide problem. And there's a number of reasons why students are leaving public education. But we need to do better in returning our students here. First of all, our students need to feel safe. They not, they need to feel welcome. They need to be respected. They need to be accepted and included as their individual self. They also need to have fun. Some of you remember maybe when Mr. Ward, a guy named Mr. Anderson, came in on a Harley, on a community pep fest and had the kids have a great time and have a lot of fun at school. We need to provide that opportunity to have fun along with rigorous academics. So that is what I would welcome to do.
Okay. Brent?
Thank you. For me personally, I would have to reach out to parents that left and ask them why. I actually know some parents that don't have their kids enrolled in the district and could. So it's their opinion of what the school district represents that I personally know of why they're not going. So we need to change that perception on what don't they like about that and enlist, trying to enlist that into not only getting along with everybody that's already here and not push them out with those ideas, but to try to get as much feedback as you can from the community to get those kids back. I'm sure everybody knows somebody that's driving their kids over to Pillager or Peers or to Pequot. And now that we've built all these fancy buildings, we need the kids to fill these things up. Thank you.
All right, Anthony?
This is not working? I think we need to work collaboratively with parents, staff, and students to bring our kids back. I think we need to develop focus groups with everybody included as to why these kids left. We all know that online schooling is, you can do it right from home, it's easy, you go for like three, four hours and then you got the rest of your day. Why can't we do that at Brainerd? Why can't we have an online schooling at Brainerd and provide this to the kids so we actually have those kids in our district? And maybe we do already have that. I'm not sure. I don't know if we do or not. But I would like to build focus groups with parents, students, and staff to develop a program somehow to get these kids back.
Done.
Over the, probably the last ten years, I've worked with a lot of kids. Brainerd is a vast educational system. There are, there are all different kinds. We hold contracts with other schools, St. Francis, Lake Region. And mostly the reason why the last probably five years, most of my kids have left this area. I've got kids that are going in Cross Lake. I've got kids going in Pequot. I've got kids going into Peers. And, and most of it is because they don't feel safe. I have a lot of kids that do not feel safe in the school. The other thing is, is like Mr. Ward said, they just don't have fun. It's, it's dig, dig, dig into all this, this books and stuff, which it should be, but they should also have a very fun experience at school. My kids is dead. I graduated in eighty-one. We did a lot of things. Pep fest. I haven't seen a pep fest this week at all. So that's where I think parents and teachers need to work together.
Thank you, Tris.
So.
Okay. I need one minute to speak to Trevor here a second. This mic's not going to work. You're going to have to use this one. I would, face forward, don't look at me when you use it, just keep your head facing forward, it'll help you. Okay. Okay, we'll now move on to the third question and this will be Trevor. You'll be answering this first. So the question three is, how would you respond to parents' concerns about what is being taught in classrooms? So the question is, how would you respond to parents' concerns about what is being taught in classrooms?
I guess first off, I would have to be wondering what their concern was, right? Is it something that's recommended that's being taught in classrooms? Is it something that maybe we can find a different alternative for their child for a class as an elective or whatever it may be? I guess to give an honest response to that question, I would have to know what the parent's concern is, honestly, before I could give an honest response to how we could come up with a resolution.
Okay. Mike?
Where there's concern, concern needs to be addressed with facts. Not opinions or rhetorical statements. Perception is reality. If a parent says they're not happy with something, there's probably something there to look into. And we need to, we need to hear that voice. We need to take that voice seriously. This is one of the reasons why my wife Elsie and I got into the curriculum. We dove into the second grade curriculum and found some things that may not have been very age appropriate and there might be something there that we need to dig into. So that's one thing. It may not be on purpose that it's being done, but I know that it's present because I saw it with my own eyes. So it's something that we need to take seriously and we need to hear those voices and we need to come together collaboratively and find out the answer and how we move forward with that as a group. Thank you.
David?
Well, I would respond, I guess my first response would be, I would be a good listener. I would listen to what their concerns are and then I would dig into that concern and get with the teachers, get with the principals, get with the school board, get with all the players that are, that have a say in, and have a, a say in what we're teaching and understand the issues and then make resolution as best we can. But without knowing what the concerns are, it's hard to, to make any solid answers. But I would be very open to that feedback from the parents because obviously their concerns are very important to how, what we teach their kids. And it's very important that we prepare our kids for success after high school. Thanks.
Okay. John?
Well, I agree with what everybody else has said. Listening to other folks with an open mind and researching and doing your homework and doing your fact finding and inviting people into schools and inviting them to talk to the administration, the staff, and invite them into a classroom. You know, talking to us as school board members and that's, you know, that's part of the job. I've always been a collaborative kind of person that has had an open mind, an open door, and listened to all sides. And that's what we need to do. We need to base our decisions on what we find out, not what anything else, anybody else says. So that's, that's how I would handle that.
Yeah, thank you. Brent?
Thank you. I wrote down, see what the facts would be before anything else was said, but that's the most important part. What are the facts of it? Is it one student? Is it a whole bunch of students? If it's one, it's a tougher case because you might have ninety-nine kids that are fine with what's being said and one that isn't. Not to degrade that one that isn't, but if ninety-nine others are okay with it, we need to figure out why that one isn't. So get the facts. Definitely listen is the key to all of it. Nobody's perfect. We're not always going to get it right. We'll never get it right, but we're going to keep trying. So that would be, I would get, try to get the facts. Listen to the parents, listen to their kids. Depending on the size and the scale of the issue, you'd have to put more resources into it. Thank you.
Okay. Anthony?
I'm going to answer this question the way I have talked to the community about and the answers that they provided me. Now, I believe that our teachers should not be telling our kids political agendas, sexual orientations, or teaching CRT. Now, whether that's going on or not, I don't know, but I have talked to the community and this is what they brought to me. If my kid knows your political views, it's wrong. That's what we do at home as parents. Yes, we have a basic sexual education class, understand, but sexual orientation should not be taught in schools either. That should be taught at home by your parents. That's what we are there for as parents. Our parents need to be more involved with our academics, with our children. So as you can tell, I get passionate about some things, but that's how our community wanted me to speak. So that's what I'm doing.
Yep. Can we please hold your applause till the end of the forum? Thank you. Tris?
I've had, I've had a lot of parents come and ask and I do a lot of digging. I do a lot of questioning. I call admin, I call teachers. Again, I kind of have to agree with Tony in a lot of aspects because there are a lot of things that parents are wondering, why are they being taught in school? They want math, they want rigorous science. I had one that asked me why science was so boring in, in the high school. And there are great teachers and, but the curriculum is just stale. And the other thing is too, is a big one that's been, being brought to my table is this Equity, Equity Alliance or Equity Group. And they want to know and understand and it's almost like it's being hidden and, and people come to the teachers, they come to, but a lot of people don't have answers or don't have answers to the questions that the parents are asking. And that's.
Okay. Thank you. Jessica?
Okay, so what would I tell parents when they have concerns about what's being taught? I don't know if this is a wide, like everything in the curriculum is wrong or if this is really just speaking to one issue. You know, in general, I would tell them some of the benefits of whatever their concern is and if it's, you know, ki, kids are way smarter and aware than people remember. I remember being very young and they know a lot more than you think. They're not just kids. They're little people who know stuff. And, I don't know. You know, the, the sexual stuff, it's a something that, I don't know, they said stop.
Okay. Thank you, Jessica. So the fourth question we have, and this will be Mike, for you to answer first. How can school, how can these school district prepare students for career opportunities with local businesses? So how can the school district prepare students for career opportunities with local businesses?
Well, first and foremost, use the resources that we have available to us. We have things in the community, right? We have collaborative working relationships with the Chamber. We have the Bridges Career Academy that we work with from CLC and the community. We have to have those deliberate engagement between the school district and those local businesses to grow those relationships. And I've, I've said it before, we have to reinvest in those relationships with the business owners so that they're, they want to come in. They want to come and see our brand-new facilities, whether it's the fax room or the shop area. It's state-of-the-art now. It, it's untouched by our local businesses. So mainly, use the resources that we have available to us with the brand-new schools and reinvest in those relationships with our, our businesses. Thank you.
Okay. David?
Well, a strong public education system is critical to our future of our community and our local businesses. As a school board member, I would definitely reach out to those local businesses and seek their feedback on how our schools can better prepare the students for the workforce. We need to provide our students with as many educational opportunities as we possibly can. And our curriculum needs to be able to adjust with the changing business trends and needs. And I think that, that business, the local businesses will provide that critical feedback to us so we, we stay engaged with the curriculum. Like I said before, keep the curriculum flexible, keep the curriculum challenging, and best prepare our students for, for success after high school. Thank you.
John?
Thank you. During the last twelve years of my career, this is one of the classes that I was able to develop, implement, and direct for the last twelve years of my class. It was called Service Learning. I probably have some of your children or grandchildren in that class. That class was a class on social skills, job skills, employment skills, career skills, personal skills. I put the kids through thirty hours of training. And then at that point, Monday through Friday, at that point, we found sites for them to go to and volunteer at Monday through Thursday for two hours. They went two hours and volunteered for three days a week, four days a week, and then they came back on Friday for reflection. When we started that class, we had zero sites in this community, so my kids all went to schools. By the time we were done with twelve years of that, we had five hundred sites where our kids could go to work as a business in the church, in a school, wherever they wanted to test out careers. It was a wonderful class. It was state award-winning class. I just got a letter from a former Service Learning student today thanking me for having that class. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Brent?
Thank you. It's going to start sounding a little redundant for me, but ask the businesses what they need. And then also put pressure on the businesses to come into the school so you can show the kids what you have to offer. So if I'm interested in something and I don't know what's in Brainerd, but I know what's in St. Cloud, I'm probably going to go look at St. Cloud to go find that spot. So it's that relationship between the businesses and the school district to make sure that they are promoted in your school so that your kids, your great kids that we can raise here can stay in Brainerd and keep it good. We don't want to raise the best students ever and then let them go to the town next door. Thank you.
Okay. Anthony?
Well, I'm going to veer off a little bit because we do need to get businesses involved. We already do that. But I would say, instead of the businesses coming to our schools, why don't we take field trips to these companies? Tom Haglen, who runs Lindar, we have Lexington. Let's take a group of kids, show them, you know, whether it's logistics, shipping, receiving, HR, finance. Let them see what it's all about, see what they're interested in, get them connected physically with what's there so we can have a partnership with the businesses and our students.
Done.
I love that.
Tris?
Brainerd, Brainerd has lost a lot of the hands-on programs. My kids all had Mr. Ward, all three of them. And, and we just, we don't have the hands-on with the kids and with the community anymore. There's no work program, there's no alternative edu, through the alternative education, the, the work study. Everybody is like, got to go to college, got to go to college. There are so many trades in this community. We've got contractors, plumbers, electricians. I mean, the, it's just a vast number of different things, but we don't get our kids involved. Parents, parents a lot of times have to work and so the kids are going to daycares and they're going to after-school programs, but I think, I think we've lost the But I think, I think we've lost the hands-on. I miss Mr. Ward's class with my grandkids. And, and they do have like the secretary program here in the school, so...
Thank you. Jessica?
Hi, thank you. I think that it would be helpful to identify students who would like to work for a local business, students who want to stay close to home. When I graduated college and I got my chemical engineering degree, minors in math and chemistry, and I could have done so many different things with my chemical engineering degree, but my grandpa had just died and I, I said, I just can't leave right now, you know? I need to be here for my family. And, you know, it was a choice that I made. Had he not died, I, you know, might have, I don't know, I might have already solved our energy crisis. That was the plan.
Okay. Thank you. Trevor?
Well, first off, I'll echo what a few others have said about the service learning program. It's a great opportunity for our students. The other thing I would look at is, in some colleges' situations, they do reverse job fairs where they invite in employers for potential employment or for internships where they basically come in and the students get to showcase their skills to them. I think that'd be a great program we could implement within our school district to set up at the high school so we can invite in community employers to have that opportunity to interview our students as well onsite that way.
Great. We'll now move on to question, the, the fifth question tonight, and this will be, David, you will get this question first. So the question is, given the concerns about mass shootings, what actions would you support to increase safety in our schools? So the question is, given the concerns about mass shootings, what actions would you support to increase safety in our schools?
Well, safety is, is very important to provide a safe working environment and a safe learning environment for our kids. As a parent, the mass shooting incidents across the country are very concerning. It scares the heck out of me. But as a school board, I would dig into the policies that we have, make sure that we have the right policies in place, that we have set up the right procedures to respond, to train our teachers, that they're able to respond to any of the security issues that we do have, and really partnership with law enforcement so we understand what the current threats are and any emerging threats. And make sure that we have that feedback loop with our, with our staff and our teachers to ensure that they are educated on what, what the dangers are and how to respond to them. Thanks.
Right. John?
That is a, in my opinion, a number one issue in our nation. Even with all the doors locked and security systems set up and everything else that you can do, somehow, sometimes, somewhere, people get in. And we saw that recently and what a tragedy, tragedy that is. We never, ever want to have that happen in our school district, and I thank all of you for the security measures that you passed in the recent bonding bill that we have here in our new buildings. It is an issue that will nev-, in my opinion, needs to continue to talk about and look at always. And it, it just cannot be forgotten that our kids' safety, our kids' public safety is the most important thing. You know, when teachers walk into their classroom for the first time in 1973, I looked at where I could put bulletin boards. When they walk in, now they go, how can I get my kids out of my classroom? That's wrong.
Okay. Brent?
Thank you. I would reiterate that the safety of the children is the most important thing with it. And again, with the last bonding bill, obviously, they spent a lot of money into increase that security aspect of those schools. You never will fully prevent it. You do need to be ready for it if it happens, so similar to a fire drill, I think you do need to go through the policies on what they do if one happens right now and kind of do that. The training, if something bad like that would happen, what would we do? Definitely work with law enforcement so that, I'm sure you, parents that are out there have received emails saying there's an incidence at this school. It just brings that, I mean, it's, I'm very impressed with what they've done so far on any of those events. There's not many times where my kids come home and say, did you hear about this without me already knowing? So, thank you.
Okay. Anthony?
All right. As you may well know, I'm going to go off on a limb again, but I think we need, my belief, because I have said it in the past earlier tonight, that safety and security is the most important thing for our staff and students. So we need, I believe, mental criminal background checks for these people and the possibility of having armed officers in our schools, not just one SRO. In every school that we have, have an armed officer and have a, some type of team come in and show us where the possibility of entrance of a shooter may come in. Do a little science and research, and let's arm officers to protect our students and our staff. Done.
Tris?
Um, Brainerd, Brainerd has always had a very good relationship with law enforcement. I've, I've had to use law enforcement a few times in certain instances. They know the kids. Sergeant Emerson knew every child just about in the entire school district. We need more conversation between people and, and a lot of legislation needs to change. There was legislation put in during the Obama years that you can't move these kids out of the classrooms. You can't talk about the kids. You can't inform people about kids. And there is a lot of mental health illness that's going on now that needs to be addressed. We, we can't just throw them under the covers, put them in MLC, put them in all, you know, the other things that we do have, but law enforcement is very prevalent in our school district, so...
Jessica?
All right. Well, what's, um, the mass shootings, you know, I just don't think that we should talk about it. Talking about it more makes more happen. And having all this stuff in school, like metal detectors and, you know, cops with guns, like how frickin' scary would that be for a kid? Just, just don't even get that out of there. You shouldn't, that's, you shouldn't be, that stuff makes you scared. That stuff starts, you know, when you live your life based on fear, that's not what I want to teach my kids, you know? Faith, faith, good people. This problem starts way before that. And, you know, we, we need, you know, people, maybe volunteers that are not mandatory reporters that students can talk to about life issues.
Okay. Trevor?
Well, beyond the safety measures have already been implemented in our schools with the remodels and stuff we have had, Anthony stole my thunder. As far as, I really firmly believe we should be contracting and hiring retired military and police officers to have armed guards at our schools with a presence. Not saying they have to sit there and flaunt it in front of our children, but it would really help out. There's a lot of great retired military and officers out there that would love to have the job to protect our children. Thank you.
And Mike?
Our referendum was passed for this very reason, for the safety of our children, right? To make every school have a one access entry point. That was one of the main reasons we passed the referendum. And to echo David and some of the others, you know, having that relationship with local law enforcement, I know we have that, because I see the presence at my kids' school, whether it's traffic, the traffic driving around and periodically coming into the class and periodically coming into the schools so the kids know who these law enforcement officers are. We, we continue to have our drills, and I know they're age-appropriate drills because my kids come home and tell me about the Wolf drills that they had at school. And that's very important to have age-appropriate, right? So they, they aren't scared off by if something should happen, and they continually practice these things. And I think that's what's important, right? Everybody being comfortable what to do in case it should happen. Thank you.
Okay. So question number six. We invited the local teachers' union, Education Minnesota-Brainerd, to submit a question for the candidates. And the question is as follows, and this will go to John. You'll be the first person to respond to this. The question, what, if anything, would you change to provide the support and balance that our district teachers need to become lifelong educators? So the question again, what, if anything, would you change to provide the support and balance that our district teachers need to become lifelong educators?
What would, what would I say again, please?
Yep. What, if anything, would you change to provide the support and balance that our district teachers need to become lifelong educators?
Okay. So what support, what I provide for our teachers to become lifelong educators of our children, right?
Correct.
So it is important that we, as we go out and hire new educators, we really, we really screen them and find and, find and retain the best curriculum development, child development, personal skills development, that we stay up, up, we stay up to date on all the new technology, on the new innovative ideas, on all education program development, education development, and, you know, make sure that our teachers are educated in technology and use the most current technology that, that they have available so our students can have the most futuristic, strong public education that can be provided for them. Done!
Brent?
Thank you. I look as teachers, just like parents, and as parents, you need to trust your teachers. Trust is one of the hardest things for anyone to gain of another person. As far as me personally, if my child has an issue with a parent, I would try to reach out to that parent or to that teacher as a parent and just see what the issue could be. There's two sides to every story with the conflict of the teachers. And with that, I'm going to go on a little bit of a limb as far as, I don't think the teachers have the ability to discipline the kids. I think the discipline portion is what's missing in schools as far as, I'm not talking about rulers on the back of the hands, but kind of going back to the, the military guards. If you've, and it's not a fear thing, but if you know the presence is there of something that, if I do this, it's bad, then that's where you can get that teacher's support as far as, we believe in what you can do for these kids. Thank you.
All right. Anthony?
Well, I think first and foremost, we need to get more parent involvement. I think a lot of times, our parents send our kids to school for daycare. And we need to support our teachers by, when our students come home, you go on Skyward, you look at their grades, you look at their missing assignments, you look at their behavioral comments. You have, every teacher has an email that a parent can very easily access and send them a note. Now, the teachers can only do so much. We need to take action as parents, as community, as staff, but I also need, I also think that we need to give them some type of incentive, our teachers, whether it's financial, whether it's PTO, whether it's, whatever it may be. And I don't know what it may be, but we need to do something to incentivize our teachers to want to be better.
Okay. Tris?
Again, back to the 15 district, or distance teaching, and dealing with 36 teachers, there are good teachers, there are bad teachers. And, and some of the good teachers, they're, they're getting burnt out. The, the things that, the responsibilities that are put on these teachers are, is just vast to me. I don't know, you know, in the same aspect as me doing daycare, I'm responsible for everything, all of their emotional well-being, their nursing, their, their everything. And it, the teacher can't teach, plus try and take care of all the kids' emotional needs and everything else. They need help in the classrooms. We need to get back to where we've got parents coming to classrooms, kids are helping each other learn how to read, you know, things like that. I mean, there's just, I can't, I can't explain how big that is. Teachers have a lot of responsibility.
Okay. Jessica?
Okay. Hi. Well, I have an idea. I mean, they could outside the box, I mean, brainstorming sessions, you know, how about an adopt a child program? You know, if you're a teacher, you know, you, you adopt a child in, you know, kindergarten and, and just kind of, you know, monitor them throughout, you know, and you want to see them keep growing and growing and graduate through grade 12. I mean, I loved to teach vacation Bible school and I would see the kids grow up and, you know, and I'm friends with them on Facebook and they're adults now, and I'm like, aren't you supposed to be five still? And, I mean, that would, that would be retention that's really rewarding and, I don't know, it's, it's just an idea that popped into my head.
Okay. Trevor?
So we do need to support our teachers. And with that, we need to let them do what they do best and what they're passionate about, and that's teach. We need to show them the support they deserve and let them, as educators, make the decisions on how to deliver instruction within the state academic standards, and we'll see them thrive. Thank you.
Mike?
Mic drop. No, like everybody else is saying, teachers are the keystone of our educational system. I think what they really want, like everybody else is saying, is to be shown that support from the parents, from the administration, you know? Getting, again, my policy, getting back to the policy, if we're, if we're, we have the policy in place, it's going to be transparent of what, what happens on strike one, strike two for the disciplinary actions, like you were saying, Brent. And I would challenge our parents to be more involved and to have that parent-teacher relationship because I've seen it, it's lost, right? We've, we've said it, you know, parents drop their kids off like it's a daycare. You have to be invested, and that's my challenge to parents. Teachers, they want to be respected. That's the biggest thing, and they want to be supported. Thank you.
And David?
Well, I would say that the teachers are the most important piece to public education. They have a tremendous impact on our children, and they can instill lifelong values that positively shape their futures. I still remember my teachers that influenced me. That's a long time ago. As a board member, I would make myself available to the teachers to better understand what they need to enhance their classrooms and their careers, and then go from there. Thanks.
Okay. So we come to our final prepared question, question number seven. This is a 30-second response question, so each candidate will have 30 seconds to respond. And Brent, you will be starting, you'll answer the question first. So the question is, what is the most significant difference between you and the other candidates in this race? So again, that question, what is the most significant difference between you and the other candidates in this race?
As far as the other candidates, I don't know any of them too personally. I've met a couple of them in the past, but as far as what I can offer you guys is, I'm a hard-working individual, and when I have a task in front of me, I will put all my efforts towards that task. One thing that I'm worried about is, I am a parent and those other things, so it's going to be very hard for me to dedicate all the time I'd want to give to it, but I will give everything I have for it. Thank you.
Anthony?
The difference between me and the rest of them is I will be as bold, blunt, honest as I can possibly be for our community, for our taxpayers, and for our students. I, I've been a boxer for 42 years. I'm no stranger to conflict, I'm no stranger to fighting. I will fight for our kids.
Done. Tris?
I find myself to be very passionate for kids also, but I also listen to parents and I listen to teachers. and I listen to teachers and, and what's going on at the time. And I will, I dig for answers. I don't stop. If anybody's, if anybody's dealt with me, sorry, but, and I'm very outspoken and, and I don't stop. I want an answer. Why, why is it going on? But I'm not rude either. I'm a very nice person and I will bring, bring answers to the table.
Okay. Jessica?
Okay, the significant difference, one, is that, um, I'm new here as a resident, a little over a year. Um, I have no friends, except for a 62-year-old woman who has Alzheimer's, so we just had the same conversation 20 times, but it's a friend. Uh, and I hate fighting. I, I bring people together ever since I was little. Um, and I worked at General Mills as an undergrad intern and got the plant people and corporate and the suppliers to all like each other, work together.
Okay. Trevor?
So again, I really don't know any of these candidates up here very well at all. Some of us just met recently. But, so I can't really say I'm better than any of them in any aspect or anything like that. But what I can tell you is, I said in my beginning statement, I will bring a unique and fresh perspective to the school board, and I will fight for your children every day, I will fight for teacher respect every day, and I will fight for community involvement every day. Thank you.
Mike?
The most significant difference between me and the other candidates is that I know that I've already been very involved with current and past board members since April of 2020. Um, I've attended, whether in person or watched every board meeting, and then had collaborative works with those members, administration, and curriculum staff, um, pretty much every single month. And I'm not going away anytime soon, so, thank you.
Okay. David?
What sets me apart, I think my leadership experience as a retired Air Force colonel, along with my experience as a substitute teacher, coach, and volunteer, will bring a unique perspective to the board. I spent the last 15 years of my military career in executive leadership positions, making tough decisions that affected budgets, policies, and personnel. My career has provided me with amazing leadership experiences and educational opportunities that I can bring to the school board. I have served my country for 29 years, and I'm ready to serve my community.
Okay. John?
Well, first of all, I don't see a lot of differences. I see a lot of people that I enjoy and like and hearing from. I hear people that are passionate. I hear people that are enthused. I hear people that are willing to serve. I hear people that are honest and that are respectful. And I appreciate anyone and thank all of you putting your, for name on the line to serve, because serving is not easy. So thank you for putting your name on the line. So, you know, maybe we are a little different, but there's a lot of stuff that is, that we like as well. I guess the biggest difference between me and the rest of the group is my 35-plus years' experience in public education. Thank you very much.
Okay. So that concludes our, our prepared questions. We do have time for a, um, audience question, and this will be a 30-second response. And now we actually go back to Anthony. You'll be the first person to respond to this, and then we'll go back through the, through the candidates in the same order. So a 30-second response, and the audience question is, what are your thoughts about school district activities to promote equity in schools? So again, the question, what are your thoughts about school district activities to promote equity in schools?
Well, I don't know what's being taught as far as equity goes in our schools, but again, I think a lot of this should be taught at home. That's what we have parents for. I don't think it's a teacher's job or an administrator's job to tell me how to act, how to think, how to perceive somebody else. That's my judgment call and my parents. That's all I got.
Okay. Tris?
Oh, that's a tough question. Um, with the, with the equity, the equity things, a lot of them, language is scaring people. They don't understand. It's, it's changing, and you're dealing with a lot of us that are older in the community. So we don't understand, and because there's not a lot of transparency, I tried to do with the tax, do with the equity task force. It's a closed meeting. I can't attend. I can't see what it is. And I wanna know why.
Okay, Jessica?
Could you repeat the question, please?
Certainly. What are your thoughts about school district activities to promote equity in schools?
Well, I guess you'd have to evaluate it first and, um, make a, a list of all the things that different schools offer and teach and compare them all, do a good data analysis, and, um, and plan some activities where the whole district comes together and they do something that one school is doing and nobody else is.
Okay. Trevor?
A lot of people get confused with equity and equality. You know, the definition of equity is the use of immutable characteristics such as race or gender determine which student should have their opportunities and outcomes adjusted. That I don't believe in. But I do believe in equality, which is providing the same opportunity instruction to all students no matter of their race, religion, or anything else. Thank you.
Okay, Mike?
Educational equity is what we, we need. All students, regardless of background, need to have the resources available to them, and those resources are provided in our, our district buildings. Regardless of where you come from, you need those resources. Regardless of who you are, you need those resources. And again, our buildings have those resources available, and our children should feel welcome to use those resources. Thank you.
David?
Yeah, the definition of equity to me is equality of being fair and impartial. Um, I think our school district needs to lead by example and follow the golden rule, treat others as we want to be treated. Mutual respect for all, that's where it starts. Um, we should expect everyone to treat others with dignity and respect, and then hold them accountable if they don't. Those are teaching moments. Thank you.
And John?
I spent 22 years of my 35-year education in special education. I saw a lot of bullying going on, a lot of discrimination, a lot of non-inclusion, and a lot of not acceptance, a lot of disrespect. And, um, it broke my heart for the special ed kids. I, as a young adult, as a child, because of my right arm, was bullied a lot. And so I've walked in these shoes. And so, as David said, you want to make sure that you treat others the way you want to be treated. And you know what? In a world where it can be anything, be kind.
Okay. Brent?
Thank you. I agree with what was said earlier as far as, I think equity and equality get confused quite often. Equity is the starting point of a race where everybody has a fair shot and we all finish in different spots. The equity portion comes into the respect portion, being able to look at others and not think less of them. How you increase the outcome of kid involvement in it, I don't know. You'd have to ask the kids, I think. I don't, I don't know what they would want to, to, uh, increase their involvement in it. Thank you.
Okay. So we will now move to our closing statements. So this will be your, your final comments tonight. Uh, each candidate will have 30 seconds to provide a closing statement. And we're gonna start with Tris. Uh, you'll be first, and then we'll move down there, again, through the candidates. So, 30 seconds for a closing statement. Tris?
Well, I think I've repeated myself 100 times. Um, I'm a very compassionate, and I'm a very passionate person with things that comes with kids, with teachers, with admin. Um, some of the things, we need transparency. There's not a lot of transparency anymore, I don't, I don't feel. Um, teachers are screaming for help. And, um, parents are also wanting to get involved, so.
Okay. Um, when I started reading some of the board materials after I signed up, I realized that there were pretty specific rules, and I figured out that there must be a lot of tension and fighting and arguing. And I, I'm not like that. I mean, I can be, but I'm really good at building relationships and bringing people together and bringing joy to the world.
Trevor?
First, I'd like to thank everybody involved in putting this event on this evening. It is greatly appreciated. I would also like to thank my fellow candidates for the time and effort they are putting into their campaigns, all with the same goal of preparing our children for the future. With that, I ask those in attendance and those watching at home this evening, please vote Trevor Mulhall this November. Thank you and God bless.
Mike?
Well, thank you for the opportunity. Like everybody else said, voters know the logistics of what's on the ballot. Up to two of these candidates, this is what you have. Do your homework. Educate yourself. Please vote. Okay? That's it. Educate yourself when you go to the, to the ballot.
David?
All right. My key points, provide best education opportunities for all students, hire the best teachers and staff, and make sure that they're supported. Curriculum, make sure it's relevant and challenging. Build strong relationships with students, staff, parents, and the community. Safety, set the standards. Make sure we have the procedures, the right procedures in place, and partner with law enforcement to ensure our, our, our schools have a safe environment. I'm confident I can make tough decisions that are both fair and impartial. I have served my country for 29 years and I'm ready to serve the community. Thank you.
John?
I want to thank everybody for attending. Um, you didn't stay home and watch the Vikings lose. Oh, no, that was last, I'm sorry, that was last night. So, um, thank you for attending and educating yourself. And, um, thank you for your service. And so, um, you know, I just, uh, I, I, by educating and voting, that's how you're going to get who you hope will do the job for you. So please, so thank you for attending, and thanks all those who put this on. Uh, edu, experience matters, and, um, I humbly ask for the consideration of your vote on November 8th. Thank you very much. Oh, these out there at the table?
You're done. John, John, we're done. Thank you. Thank you. Brent?
Thank you. I'm gonna look to you guys to help me do what I feel like I need to do for you. So I'm gonna put myself out there to be pulled and pushed, whatever way the community reaches out, and try to build that back into it so we can, we can have trust in our school district again. Some of the things that people don't realize is, your job is not done on vote night. Stay involved with your kids' education and call the board and let them know, irregardless of who gets in there. What, the, the videos are online, you can watch it, you can call them. Thank you to all the past board members, and good luck to the rest of you guys.
Okay. Anthony?
Thank you all for coming. Um, it's very important you get out and vote. I always say, if you don't vote, you don't have an opinion. So please get out and vote. I promise you, with every ounce of blood I have, I will fight first and foremost for our kids and our community. And we need to bring Brainerd Warrior pride back. I was born in CI, all I could say was go CI, go. But now I'm in Brainerd, so now I'm a warrior. So let's bring Warrior pride back.
Okay. Thank you. So that concludes tonight's forum. Let's give the, let's give a one more round of applause to all the candidates. So, uh, John almost took my thunder, but you can find candidate materials and voting information near the front, uh, doors. And please remember to vote. Election Day is Tuesday, November the 8th, and early voting begins Friday, September 23rd. Please go to vote411.org for accurate information regarding your voter registration, what's on your ballot, and always plea, and ways to vote. So on behalf of the Brainerd Lakes Chamber of Commerce, the League of Women Voters, and the Brainerd Dispatch, thank you for being here. We will now take a brief break and transition to the next section, which is the regular term four years. Thank you.